All right, welcome back from the lunch break. We're going to continue on to our next item, the 6.10, Discussion and Consideration of PG&E's Vegetation Management Programs. Supervisor, Vice Chair, Paeska, didn't know if you wanted to take the lead on this, or if you had someone you were going to introduce.
Well, yeah, we have some representatives from PG&E, so you can come up here if you'd like. You can come up here.
Right here, in the front.
In these chairs.
You'll have to come around from outside, probably.
Got the microphone right for you.
Yeah. All right.
And there's one microphone there, you've got to kind of slide it and have it right in front of you when you're talking. Figure we'll let you know before Sam comes out and moves it for you. Try and have it right in front of you when you're talking, just slide it back and forth.
Very good.
And do we have Melinda on Zoom, is she feeling well enough?
I know she was planning to join us.
Okay. So the reason that, oh, actually, do you want to give your names for the record?
Sure, well, first of all, thank you for having us. My name is Matt Leedy, I'm a colleague of Melinda's, I'm in Government Affairs, but assigned specifically to our veg management programs, including some of the things I'll review today, be it routine, EVM, and wood management. And then with me, I have Rich Noonan, he's a Public Safety Specialist on Wildfire Operations. I'll let you say hi and introduce yourself, Rich.
Yes, thanks for the opportunity today to engage with you. It's nice to finally meet you in person. As Matt said, Rich Noonan, Public Safety Specialist, I have Mendocino and Lake County. My background prior to that, eight years in the Navy and then 24 with CalFire.
Great. So the reason I asked you here is, you know, we're dealing with catastrophic tree mortality throughout the county, and we started having conversations last winter with PG&E about the planned vegetation management that you were going to be doing and the wood haul. And, you know, back in the winter, I was pushing really hard for the wood haul when there were 600 trees that had been identified and leaving 600 trees on the ground and, you know, what that would do for the safety of our community. And then PG&E decided to do the wood haul or included it in that program. And then after about six months of work, and now that's coming to an end, and it's just going to put our community at risk. It's, you know, we're in the middle of fire season, we're in this incredible dry drought period, and our situation with tree mortality is worse than it was last winter. So I think this is just where we'll start the conversation today.
Okay, very good. We had a slide presentation prepared about our various programs and our work in general. Would you like me to speak to that, or would you prefer?
Well, you did include the slide presentation in the package, so you're welcome to go over that.
Okay, if it pleases.
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah. Somebody bring that up?
It's on the package.
Oh, it's in the package?
Yeah.
And I'll just, while we're waiting, I know that, I think a couple of weeks back, we had, they had an RCRC meeting where CEO Patty, was there Patty Pope?
Patty Poppy.
Poppy, yes. And so, and that was a real big topic, topic of discussion was what we're talking about today. A lot of different supervisors had those same concerns, so just glad that we're talking about it.
Very good, yeah, so am I, thank you. You got it, thank you. Sorry. Can you go to the next slide and the one after? Okay, very good. As I alluded to, as part of our ongoing efforts to prevent wildfires, we are conducting annual and additional inspections to remove dead, dying, diseased, or defective trees that could harm power lines or equipment. In this slide, the first panel refers to our routine vegetation management work, which occurs annually along all electric distribution power lines. I'm able to navigate it, is it just the arrow key?
Just the next one.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Getting back to routine vegetation management, like I said, this occurs annually and involves meeting important state vegetation and fire safety standards. These standards include for high fire threat districts, maintaining a minimum clearance of four feet around power lines, you'll see that in the first set of circles around those crossarms, and a minimum clearance of 12 feet or more at the time of pruning. And this is to ensure that we're able to maintain that four feet clearance year round. Routine vegetation management also includes cutting down dead, diseased, defective, or dying trees with the potential to fall and strike the power lines. The next panel, go ahead.
I just have a question about this, so I, sometimes I see trees that are just topped at that four foot, wouldn't it be better to just bring, get the whole tree down rather than like a pine tree or some kind of conifer that is not going to do much as a half of a tree under power lines? We see this a lot.
I understand what you're saying. I believe the strategy is if the tree can survive being topped, and many can, that we leave those intact as long as they are no longer a threat to our power lines.
But then, if they do survive and they do thrive, then they're going to grow right back up again, so.
Yes, and that's why we also do off-year vegetation management, referred to as enhanced vegetation management. And I'll talk to that right after the drought and tree mortality response, if that's okay. And then feel free to jump in. The drought and tree mortality program is in response to what you alluded to, Supervisor, the many years of drought that we've experienced that has weakened trees and also made them highly susceptible to infect, insect infestations, namely the bark beetle. The drought tree mortality response program includes additional inspection of trees along power lines and, again, high fire threat areas with ground patrols and helicopters approximately six months after the annual routine inspections. This also involves cutting down dead, diseased, dying, or defective trees, primarily in areas, again, affected by drought and the bark beetle. The third panel refers to enhanced vegetation management, also in high fire threat areas, that goes above and beyond and expands our risk model for mitigation work that's conducted during drought and tree mortality inspections. Our enhanced vegetation management work exceeds state standards for minimum clearances around power lines, so going above and beyond what you see in the routine vegetation management. And it includes pruning overhanging limbs and branches above power lines. And that you'll see in reference to the, it's a purple fuchsia bar there, going all the way up to the sky. So that's, overhang is the primary difference between EVM and routine vegetation management. Like the other programs, there are additional inspections beyond routine patrols to cut down dead, diseased, dying, or defective trees that could harm power lines or equipment. And it also evaluates the condition of trees that are tall enough to strike the lines or equipment. And on the next slide, I'll talk a little bit about the regulatory requirements that PG&E is legally required to maintain. For God, I was in charge of this slide. Well, as we're bringing it up, I could talk about the requirements we're required to maintain. We are held to CPUC Commission Order 95, Rule 35, there we go, and California Public Resources Code 4292 and 4293. Also, under Article 12 of the California Constitution, local discretionary authority over public utility projects is preempted by the California Public Utility Commission, the CPUC, and their exclusive jurisdiction. As such, PG&E's vegetation management projects are not subject to local conditional use permits, tree permits, tree removal permits, excuse me, or other similar local discretionary permits. Having said that, PG&E does obtain all necessary ministerial encroachment permits for work being performed in public right-of-ways. If you can advance to the next slide. On this slide, this shows our specific work for enhanced vegetation management in Lake County. Melinda, are you on, would you like to speak to this?
Hi, Matt, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Melinda Rivera, I work in local government affairs for PG&E, for Lake County and for Sonoma County. I'm having some trouble projecting, so I'm going to turn up my volume a little bit. So basically, this slide shows that we have been doing some enhanced vegetation management work in Lake County. We have completed over 364 line miles so far on our circuits. For 2022, what we had planned was to complete almost 81 miles. Thus far, year-to-date, we have completed just over 22 line miles for our work in Lake County. So we do still have quite a bit of work to get through. You can see on this map, we do have some areas highlighted, areas kind of on our Hartley Circuit, up there, northwest of Lakeport, areas in Cobb. And then you can see down below, down towards the Napa County line, we also have some areas highlighted, kind of down there off Butz-Kamian Road in that area, where we are trying to finish up our enhanced vegetation management work for this year. So this slide is the contact information, and this is specific for wood removal. So we have this phone number here for, and this is something that you, as leadership, and once again, many thanks to all of you as Board of Supervisors, Chair Crandall, and County Administrator Parker, for your leadership in helping us to work with the County of Lake on vegetation management so that we can mitigate risks around our lines. This is a number that can be distributed, as well as an email address. So, excuse me, so we had, given the extent of the tree mortality that Supervisor Paeska referenced earlier in the meeting, we had, we had made a commitment about the Cobb area to haul wood. And at that time, we had not, we did not know what the full extent and how much tree mortality would occur. We did have a pause on wood haul earlier, like a couple of months ago, for all of our veg management programs, including our enhanced vegetation management program and our routine work. We are resuming wood haul on all of our programs. So we appreciate that the situation has been dynamic, and so we definitely are sensitive that customers want this wood haul, if we're able to do so safely. So please feel free to distribute this information. We definitely want to make this available for, as Matt referenced, we don't normally do wood haul except for enhanced vegetation management, which is the majority of the trees there in Cobb that are dead and dying. But for those that are not enhanced vegetation management, if there are any customers who would like dead or dying trees that have been cut on their property to have them hauled away, they can still go back and contact this number to request wood removal. If they were declined earlier, and we had a pause on wood removal, they can go back and ask to have their property reevaluated. So we did make this exception for Cobb for this year. Again, we don't normally offer wood haul for programs outside of enhanced vegetation management, but we understand this is an unprecedented event that's impacting Lake County this year. We are open to taking questions at this time.
Well, I sincerely appreciate that it's been reconsidered, because it just, that was not going to be acceptable for us. But I, I'm looking at the map for the enhanced vegetation management, and it doesn't look like that's including the Sota Bay Corridor. And I know that we're experiencing a lot, we're experiencing a lot of tree death in that area. And our emergency is countywide. We did declare the emergency in May for the entire county. And so I just don't know why it's restricted to one area.
Yeah, that is an excellent question, Supervisor Paeska. So basically, you know, we do understand that tree mortality, sorry, hang on just a second. We do understand that tree mortality, that the county has been impacted in various areas, not just in Cobb. However, when we were initially approached by the county, it was specific to the Cobb area. And so the exception we made at that time was for Cobb. At this time, we're not offering this kind of exception and offering wood haul for any areas outside of Cobb, and we're not offering it for other counties that are also experiencing this event as well.
We have representatives from two of our HOAs along the Sota Bay Corridor, and so they can speak to the effect that this is having, having on their communities and their residents, and so whenever it's appropriate, Chair Crandall, that they come up and speak to that. I do just, I feel like this is arbitrary, the circle that's been drawn. And, you know, we have to get to the point, get to where the, get to the place where, where our, our whole county can, can have this wood haul if, if it's needed. This Sota Bay Corridor is one of the topmost dangerous evacuation corridors in the state. And to have vegetation and wood and branches, sometimes it takes weeks, sometimes it takes months to clean up, in our public right-of-way corridor, that is going to put lives in danger.
All right, I had a question. Who, so it looks like you're considering implementing this again for especially that area, right? That's what, that's what I heard. Who conducts the work? Is it just PG&E solely? Do you contract with, who do you contract with?
We use contractors. Melinda, do you know the specific contractor?
I don't know who is doing wood haul. I can get that information for you, for Chair Crandall and Supervisor Paeska and the rest of the board. I don't know, I know that a lot of our routine work is, of course, conducted by Loggers Unlimited, but I don't know if that's the same subcontractor that we'll be using for wood haul. So I apologize, I will find that out and get that information back to the board.
All right. Yeah, because I know that that was a big concern, not just with other counties, but I know with us as well, that if it's a very difficult task to obtain for PG&E, maybe contract with local folks that can do the work as well. That way, we can take care of some of these, you know, down trees and whatnot. But at the same time, I do share the same energy and emotion that you have in regards to the full county benefiting from this. I understand it's not done in other counties, however, I think it would be a good thing to, to work with some of our other areas as well. Yeah. So I don't know, I think that was my only question that I have. I don't know Supervisor Simon, if you do, go ahead.
I think some of the questions already brought up are good points. For years, we've been talking about, you know, cutting a tree down, and then three years later, having to come back and trim the same one. We're always talking about return on investment, and that just seems like an ongoing, you know, thing that we have happen here. Always too, I know this work needs to be done. I know PG&E is doing everything that they can to continue enhancing, as they said, the enhanced vegetation and management. But, you know, we have all had in our districts, trees that were cut down by PG&E, you know, a few years ago, five years, four years. And then we get a call and say, hey, you know, I think in my area, it was the Noble Ranch area, had a bunch of trees and stuff. I think that area was somewhat addressed, I hadn't heard from the new HOA recently. But looking at it from an entire county perspective is always the best way. You know, at least for myself, I'm not asking PG&E to fix what's going on in the forests, just what's in the communities and affecting our constituents, you know, right on their properties or along their property lines. And as we move forward with that, just knowing that at least we could have those conversations is real important. I'm hearing what you're saying today, as far as the Cobb area, we would like to have it opened up. I know some folks in Riviera are going to talk about that. And, you know, having PG&E's ear to at least be open to any other situations, because I'm on board also with the Riviera area. I know we got a lot around the county that needs to be done, but that is one of our, you know, targeted areas that we look at. You know, where's the most vulnerable situation if something happens? And that is in that area right now. That's why we have the home hardening program. You know, we're not asking, you know, everybody, well, we're asking everybody to do their part. We're not just saying, hey, PG&E, you've got to do all of that. We're trying to do stuff proactively from the county side. We just need that conversation and to be open to keep having those things. And, you know, Richard, it'd be great, you know, you've probably been out there a bunch, but at least to go out there and look at it. I know some tours would probably be offered in the area to go look. And, you know, these are hard conversations. I know there's undergrounding happening in Lake County, can't say enough for that. I know over the next few years, a lot of that's going on. But these are continuing conversations and calls that we get as supervisors. And let's hope the rain comes early this year, but we still got to get that fuel off the ground and be moving forward. So, you know, I don't think there's a simple solution today, and I don't think you guys have the authority to say, okay, yeah, we'll do the whole county. But we need to have that message taken back, that it's open for those conversations to continue for Lake County, and, you know, hopefully improve every year as we're moving forward. So hopefully, as we're doing it, removing the trees, the enhanced vegetation, the undergrounding, it's all going to be a part of that long-term success here for PG&E and Lake County. You know, at least on that front for our utility. You know, for me, vegetation abatement and those, there's one line that I bring up every conversation I have with PG&E, that's the 1103 line. I'm pretty sure I got that one right. I think I bring it up with you too, Melinda, every time, to the backside of Hidden Valley. That's a very important and sensitive one, it goes out quite a bit, whether it's PSPS, where there's the trips that happen, or anything else. It seems like almost every year, the past five years, we've been standing under that line and getting something figured out for that, I think, is real important for one of the largest communities in my area. But taking on that whole aspect, you know, I just, I want to support my District 5 supervisor over there and say, yeah, the Riviera's is real important to us, so. Other than that, that's, that's all I have, and, you know, we'll have some more conversation after the community gets their opportunity.
Very good, thank you.
So you want, we want to invite the...
I think we can open it up to public.
Yeah, I'll open it up to public, and if you want to come up, sir, and...
Good afternoon, my name is Phil Hartley. I'm President of the Board of Directors for Riviera West Homeowners Association. And I also, it's my pleasure to serve on the Board of our newly-formed Conucti Fire Safe Council as well. I've been in this position for probably too many years. But about four years ago, we really began to notice in our community an increase in the number, than the tree mortality. This was something that began, and now it's grown, and the county has recently responded to it with its emergency notification. So in early 2018, one of the things we noticed was that with increased PG&E activity in our community, there was the leftovers. So then this all comes down to really a single corporate policy on the part of PG&E, which is, or which was in 2018. We will leave everything greater than four inches in diameter on the ground. And they leave. The responsibility for that then becomes the individual property owners, because in an HOA, you can't have hazardous material piled up on the ground. It's a tremendous fire hazard, something has to be done with it. So in 2008, early 2008, I began some conversations with the local vegetation program managers for PG&E. These were initially positive and cooperative conversations about the problem. I said, I understood that, well, way out in the dingoes, you know, out there on a 20-acre ranch or something, leaving wood behind is probably no, no big deal. And they probably even want to use the wood, you know, although fireplaces are now against the law, and no one in our community uses firewood. But I understood that. But in a community where the average lot size is like 70 to 90 feet, any one tree or any one pile of hazardous material instantly threatens houses on all sides. It's just, there's no room there for, for error. We wanted to do our part. I was, at about the same time I was talking with the managers up in Willets, managed to get a grant to try to clear some, some of this stuff away. I agree with Mr. Simon, we all have to do our part. And from the beginning, we've always said, we want to cooperate. Is there something we can work out here? How can we help? How can we help you identify trees? How can, you know, notify owners? Anything you need, we're ready to do it. So we got a grant, and we hired some workers and some volunteer help. And I gave you a little packet of information, the first picture of which shows that on that, on that day, that week, we took out two and a half tons, two and a half tons of debris, just tree debris. That's, yes.
Was that on one lot?
No, no, this was six lots.
That's a lot of material.
It was a lot of material. No, you understand that what we see is PG&E comes in, they'll take down a tree, they'll take away the limbs and the kind of the needles and stuff, and there's a nice neat, nice neat potential bonfire, you know, of everything above four inches, and that's the issue. So in early 2008 then, I had conversations with the manager. As I said, they're very, very cooperative and very helpful. I gave them the information that they needed to have to, to talk about this suit, and I received a communication from PG&E on July 11th, 2018. Says basically, I know we'll have a tree contractor out there Monday to clean up the remaining wood that is less than 10 inches. And of course, I went yahoo, okay, great, we've got an agreement, we're all fixed, we got a cooperative agreement with PG&E, and we're off to the races. Well, make a long story short, that contractor never showed up. Nothing ever happened. So along about August of that month, I contacted the tree manager and said, hello, do you still work for PG&E? And here's the problem, and now it's building back up again, and so forth and so on, and gave him the information, those are all in your packet, documented in your packet. The manager's response was, I am still with PG&E, but my areas of responsibility has shifted. I will forward your email over to the correct individual to follow up. Guess what? All right, no, no follow-up. In October of that year, 2009, we waited until October 19th, 2019, about six, seven, eight months of waiting for all this to happen. And I, again, communicated with the new manager. His response was, okay, I'll forward this information to my supervisor. And so we waited a little longer, brings us up to about the, in 2019. You know, we sent them the list of the addresses where there were current piles of stuff that hadn't been taken away. We got another bright piece of hope when this, we now move into 2020, nothing's, nothing's happened. When PG announced their new enhanced program, we thought, well, hey, maybe there's something here. The notice that they began tagging on people's property said, if you have trees on your property that were previously marked, we will work with you to discuss any change. Let's see, all trees are here. We will be removing wood as part of this work. If you would like to keep the wood, please let us know as soon as possible at the number above. So we, oh, okay. So the default is they're going to take away the wood. That's what the notice says. And if you want to keep the wood, you have to call up and say, I want to keep my wood, okay? Well, guess what? That didn't happen. No one called, by the way, to keep their wood. We still kept getting complaints because people wanted the wood taken away. For our citizens, these leftover wood piles are, in their view, a hazardous, costly potentially, because eventually the HOA makes them haul it away, thousands of dollars, by the way. Nuisance, incredible nuisance. Then, so I began trying, I thought, well, better move up the scale a little here, start talking to Sacramento. I began talking, having conversations with the people in Sacramento. They said, well, you know, we'd sure like to help out, but, but we get sued if we take the wood away, because people accuse us of stealing, you know, their wood. And so I went, oh, hey, we can help you out, we're an HOA. There are CCNRs, and everybody signed up. I gave them the legal references to our powers. See, we can tell an owner, you don't have to get an owner's permission to take something off of one of our properties, the HOA doesn't, because they agreed in the CCNRs. We offered PG&E then to provide, you know, under the enhanced program, permissions to take away the wood from any property they identify that they were going to act on. We even printed up the forms, everybody's... up the forms, everybody, we're going to, we would give them the forms to PG&E, filled out the forms. That's right. And so that kind of brings us up to today. So that's, and then finally, in early this year, I did file a formal case, formal complaint with PG&E. Uh, they responded to the complaint by sending out a foreman from one of the contractor groups, um, Loggers Unlimited, which, by the way, do great, great, great work. Watched a lot of contractors work. They do great work. And they're, the person who came out was very appreciative of the point of view we were trying to make. He understood that leaving, you know, wood behind, that's between four and 10 inches is, creates a fire hazard. But his contract wouldn't, will not allow him to take away the wood because he wasn't contracted with PG&E, you know, to do so. Uh, and so my case was dismissed. Or they said my case was settled because, uh, my, our case, Riviera West's case was settled because somebody came out and told us they weren't going to take away the wood. So today, as we, I stand before you, um, June, PG&E has gone back to its more traditional, um, notification. You have a copy there in your, uh, in your packet. And it just explicitly says, anything over four inches is your responsibility. We're not taking it away. And they notify owners largely by tacking up these, um, notices to something on their property, which is kind of cute because, and that's probably required, but the notice lasts about two to three days, you know, with our wind and, and, you know, and the lady who owns the property lives in Indonesia, so she doesn't drive by very often to see her property. So right now, we're at a situation where the owners don't know what's, what's happening. No permissions are being, you know, asked of them in one way or the other. And the note, whatever notices is being posted, I'll end with this.
Yes.
And this is the issue for Riviera West. Wood or wood debris is generated from vegetation management work legally belongs to the property owner. As a service to our customers, PG&E will chip wood debris less than four inches in diameter when accessible, which will be spread on the site, uh, to CAL FIRE standards or hauled away. So that's the reality of today. PG&E comes in, selects a, selects a tree. We wish they would do that with our cooperation. Uh, just two months, two months ago, one of our proper owners walked out, looked on his property, and there was a crew there, the Timbers Unlimited crew, kind of looking around, and what are you doing here? Well, we're here to take down a tree. Well, no, I took, I took, the owner had already taken the tree down a couple of months, a couple of months before. Because there's no coordination, you see. And so we keep spending money, both outfits.
All right.
But that's.
Thank you for, thank you for that. Um, I think it's, uh, Mr. Noonan had to step out. We think, we've been notified that there's a fire over here on Hendricks. And so just letting you know that that's taking place, that's why he stepped out. And, um, just giving that insight, probably need to figure out what's going on there with that. But I didn't know if there's anyone else that wanted to speak, ma'am. And if we could keep it brief, I think we got, uh, and then you can go afterwards. But go ahead, ma'am, come on up.
Thank you. Thank you very much. My name is Kathy Andre, and I serve as President of the Riviera Heights Homeowners Association, as well as the President of the Canuck Fire Safe Council. Our area is part of the Sota Bay Corridor and is, as Supervisor Piska noted, is one of the most dangerous, most densely populated areas in Lake County, and it has yet to burn. We are, I would first of all, like very much to invite PG&E to come out, and I will personally take you on a tour of this area and show you exactly what's going on. Because I think there's a disconnect between what you, PG&E might believe is going on and what is actually happening in our areas. And this is a real concern to me, and I'm very appreciative that you're here today. I'm very appreciative that the Board of Supervisors has brought this forward as a, a public comment and topic. In Riviera Heights, um, we have, I'm working with probably four or five different homeowners right now, whose properties have been damaged, almost massacred by PG&E, if I could put it that way. So one property had nine trees removed by PG&E. We asked those trees to be removed. They were dead trees, dead 130-foot trees that were in danger of houses and everything else on this vacant lot, next to this vacant lot. PG&E came down and they cut the trees down. It, it took a while to get them there, but they did. They cut nine of these large trees down, and they left a pile. They weren't organized. They weren't lined up. They were piled on top of each other, and nothing was chipped. All the branches were left. Absolutely nothing was done. And it created a greater danger than what we had before when the trees were still standing. This is totally unacceptable. And in addition to that, I had to call Travis May, who I would like to thank Travis, and I think he's very brave and does a great job in returning our calls and dealing with us, because he's the guy we call and go, Travis, it's been a month. The brush is still on the ground. The trees are still on the ground. How are we going to resolve this? The owner of that particular property with nine dead trees, just for the sake of conversation, is looking about conservatively $1,000 a tree to have those trunks removed. $9,000. Because PG&E came in, luckily cut the trees down, but they left all of these trunks. There's another owner on Edgewood, whose property just had two large dead pine trees downed. And not only did PG&E down them, which was great, they left the trunks, they left all the brush. It has been over three weeks since PG&E dropped these trees. And again, we have more of a serious fire danger than when the trees were standing. Again, this just, there is a disconnect, as I said, with what I think you believe is happening and with what we're experiencing. The amount of money that, that this cutting down these trees is costing our homeowners is extravagant. You're looking at thousands and thousands of dollars that we are asking our homeowners to pay for when they shouldn't have to. This is PG&E's responsibility. It is not the homeowner's responsibility. In addition to that, when you're talking about these trees being topped, and they're just fine, they're not. These trees have been, we've had, I think, we had seven trees in a row on our Main Street Riviera Heights Drive that were topped. Probably half of them were already dead, and they were topped anyway. They weren't cut down and removed by PG&E because they were dead. No, they were topped. And that, it just kept spreading the beetle infestation to the other trees that were there, that PG&E also topped, weakened the trees. And then they were consumed by the beetle infestation and disease, and then those trees died. So we had a whole lovely row of dead pine trees that were topped. The other trees that we have was where PG&E comes in, and they, they're close to the wire.
Can we come to, uh?
Yep. Okay. I think you get my drift. Please come out and look at us, look at what's really happening. Our very lives are endangered. Our ability to evacuate down Sota Bay Road with all of the trees that are there that are going to be cut down by PG&E and have already been cut down by PG&E endangers us all. And again, this is one of the most densely populated areas in all of Lake County that have yet to burn. Thank you very much, and thank you for listening. And I hope I see you out there.
And could, could we connect after, so I could get your contact information?
Absolutely. I brought pictures. What a surprise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have one. Scott, Scott, I'll let you go ahead and go before we are next public input. Go ahead, Scott.
Great. Thank you. Um, Melinda, nice to see you. Um, perhaps we can discuss this offline. I was encouraged to hear that you plan on resuming your wood collection. Uh, I'd like to respectfully request PG&E not leave debris in our county road right-ofways. You're hearing from property owners and representatives of HOAs, uh, that have concerns. And, and we, we as a Department of Public Works also have concerns about materials being left in the, in the road right-ofway. Uh, we've received a number of calls, and you and I have had some conversations about, um, you know, complaints that we've received and, and a plan to have that material picked up. Again, um, just want to voice a concern that I'd really like to not see those materials left in the county road right-ofway. So perhaps we can, uh, work on that together, uh, offline. But I did want to share that, share that point.
All right. Did you want to come up still, Joan?
I'm Joan Moss. I live on Wildcat Road. It's hard not to cry when I drive up and down Wildcat Road. Everybody has a story on Cobb Mountain. And I love trees. That's why I live there. I have a letter from Mendocino County that I got copied, and PG&E says they've already answered the letter. But the letter brings some very interesting things. Could you pass this to the supervisors? I appreciate Jessica Piska for saying what she's saying today. I didn't know where to send my complaints. Uh, I, I called Vegetation Management. She said, you're the first complaint we've gotten. We're going to send a representative out to you. I never heard back. A friend of mine who lives in La Cloman had a dead and dying tree. And PG&E said, we'll cut it down for you. But if it's in a safe place, we will not remove it. She had it removed by PG&E. It took her $4,000 to remove that tree, that she had to spend personally. Um, Mr. Schutz, he told me about the one tree he was trying to shave. A neighbor said, she might have been exaggerated, that PG&E cut down 700 trees on his property. I drove up there, and he had big trunks laying on the ground between his house and the renter's house. This is on saddle. And it took one year before PG&E came and removed those trees. Meanwhile, they took down many more trees along Wildcat Road. I'm hoping to take pictures once I learn how to use my new movie camera. And it, it's a tragedy. It's very sad. There is mobilization by neighbors who are unhappy with the complaint process, and unhappy with Ms. Pica. Ms. Piska, I'm not unhappy with her. We're all trying to find a solution to what is going on. There are piles of logs that have been there for two or three years. And now there's more piles of logs that have been there for, for just a one year. And as we feel, it's more of a, of a hazard than it was to start with. So, um, the PG&E representative was very nice and taking notes, and he's going to call me. And we need to know what our rights are, and who to call, and who to work with. I made friends with Loggers Unlimited. I showed them a story I wrote about a douchebag, another subject. And I have them promising not to cut my trees. They're my friends. But, uh, but, uh, but Loggers Unlimited almost, almost killed me. I had to jump up on a hill. And this vehicle was bigger than a UPS truck. And he was driving up Wildcat Road much faster than 25 miles per hour. But now, they're all 25 miles per hour because I complained. And I will keep complaining. And, um, Joe Schroeder complained to PG&E three times about his dead pine trees that border his wonderful pool where I swim. Jessica is there too, swimming.
John, if you can start wrapping up.
Just a minute, I'm winding up. I, this fellow here got to talk over five minutes.
That's why I'm giving you your, you spoke about that long too. So please finish up.
But I'm saying that this fellow got PG&E to promise to, um, cut down the poles, get good materials. If you read the letter to Mendocino, by Mendocino County Supervisors, they pointed out that the settlements where PG&E was found at fault, it wasn't the trees' fault. It was PG&E's poles and wires that were not up to code that caused the problems all throughout California. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
I'm being scattered, but I hope we can all work together. One thing more, there is a law against, um, there is a law apparently that we cannot learn, but we have heard that whoever cuts a tree down gets more money. The contractors get paid extra for each tree they cut.
Joan, if we could please.
Thank you. I just had to say that. One more thing. Thank you.
All right. Um, is there anyone with public input? I don't see anyone in the chambers. Zoom, do you see hands, hands up anywhere? Okay. If, uh, we'll go to Zoom. And so, John, if you can unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, excellent. Thank you so much. Uh, my name is John Funke. I'm a Riviera Heights property owner. Um, I want to thank PG&E and Supervisor Piska for, um, putting this meeting together. And just to highlight what I, my experience has been that, um, just like Kathy mentioned, is that while PG&E cuts down the trees, what they've left on my properties are just a tangled mess and don't chip branches. And I've called, I've sent emails, just trying to get them to comply with their own regulation of chipping anything from four inches. Because right now, what has happened is the actual downed trees on the property, in my opinion, have created a, a bigger fire hazard than just leaving the trees in place. And so I appreciate the new number that was given, the, uh, the treesafety@pgne.com. But, but I think there needs to be a heightened effort from PG&E simply to fulfill their obligation that they stated that they were going to do. Um, and uh, just to take care of the chipping, you know, do whatever it needs to be done, um, and just fulfill their initial obligations before, um, and work with the homeowners directly. Um, I just want to thank, thank the supervisor again for, uh, having this hearing, because it, it's a, it's a big light of hope that PG&E has been here. Hopefully PG&E hears this message and will take immediate action to correct it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we have another hand up. And if you can unmute and state your name for the record.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. This is Bart Levinson. Um, this is the day after the anniversary of the Valley Fire. Uh, I lost my property in the Valley Fire, and I now live in the Riviera. Um, what we know about the Riviera is that, uh, the people talking to you today are trying to tell you, and the supervisors are trying to tell you, is we already know that we are designated as the highest, most densely, the highest risk, highest dense population area, uh, likely to burn if ignited in California. We don't want to be another paradise. But we're going to be another paradise if we can't keep reducing our fire risk. For PG&E to come here and make our fire risk worse is absolutely unconscionable, unacceptable, and is on the level of you setting up another paradise. Not okay. Sorry to speak so emotionally, but 65% of our county has already burned, and this area where you're doing this, creating these new fire hazards, is already known as the highest fire danger area in the county and maybe in the state. We depend on one narrow, two-lane evacuation route. We'll all be pouring out onto it. And your piles of wood are endangering our lives. And your piles of wood are endangering our lives. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so is there any other hands up? I think that, okay, so we'll close public input and bring it back. Supervisor Pyska.
So when we started really addressing tree mortality in the county late last year, early this year, we formed the Tree Mortality Task Force, which PG&E is a part of, and Melinda participates on a monthly basis. We're really appreciative for that. The amount of work that has to be done around the county is more than one agency can handle. And so the whole strategy with that task force is to divide up the work so that it gets done. And PG&E has been a great partner in that. I'm really appreciative of what's happened since then. There are some areas to improve, and that is, you know, shortening that time between the tree work and the tree removal, because I believe there are different contractors. And there has to be a way to, to have that happen much more quickly. Now, there are a ton of complaints. I get on a regular basis. They may not go through the official hotline. But I get them, I ask people to send them to me, and then I send them directly to Melinda. And then typically, they're handled quickly that way. And I, I do hear back from some constituents. Although this, you know, as other people have mentioned, this has been going on a long time, and there are still lots of piles that have been around for years and years. So, you know, expanding the scope to the whole county is really going to be necessary. Our, our emergency is countywide, and that needs to be recognized. It's not just one community. And shortening that timeframe between the pickup, or I'm sorry, the tree work and the pickup, that has to happen. And then there are just some other complaints that I get with the contractors. And, you know, I, I think that I can give that to you offline, but just maybe a little more oversight with those subcontractors in the area to kind of clean things up. I know Joan talked about her speeding incident. She didn't get hurt, so that's good. And I think they're paying attention now on Wildcat Road. But, you know, there is this other side of the conversation about people not wanting their tree work done. And, you know, I always say, like, we, the reason why the trees are going around the power lines is because this work hasn't been done for a long time. And it is jarring to see that tree work being done if it hasn't been done to the standard it needs to be. And if you want to live in an area that has trees, there's tree work that has to happen. I live in an area where there are no trees because every single one of them burned and died. And I don't want anybody to have to live in an area like that. And so we have to be really mindful of the vegetation work that, that is necessary to protect our communities, to protect our homes, and to protect your infrastructure. So I, I do appreciate you coming in here and giving us this news. That's really wonderful news. I think the scope does need to be expanded, as you've heard along this, you know, critically. And I, I know you're doing the, is it just the regular vegetation management? Because it's not the enhanced vegetation management along the Sota Bay Corridor? Is that, Melinda? Because it's not in the circle for the enhanced vegetation, the EVM. But I know you're serving that area and work has begun in the Sota Bay Corridor.
Supervisor Pyska, I'll follow up with our enhanced vegetation management team. See if I can get a better sense of where exactly we're going to be doing circuit miles in Lake County this year. I, I don't want to speak out of turn. If, if I can follow up with you.
Sure. And the science and data is telling us that this problem is not going away anytime soon. And it's going to be critical that we remain partners in this work and that all the other partners continue to do their job. Caltrans does their job. We're about to work on, on our county right of ways. We're about to launch that project. We do. And for your benefit, we've also applied for a grant to do our own vegetation management on the corridor. So we don't expect PG&E to do everything. We just have to work together. We have to have this partnership intact. We have to continue these conversations. But we really need you to continue with this.
Any other comments? I just, so some of these folks that have talked today and live in specific areas where they're having issues, they can email or call the number that you provided that says Trees Safety, PG&E is that, and then the contact information there, they can directly call that number?
Correct.
Okay.
Can we just put that slide up one more time so everybody can see it?
Yeah, and thank you so much, Chair Crandell and Supervisor Pyska, for having us here today and for showing that particular slide. And Supervisor Pyska, you and the other members of the County Board of Supervisors are so good about making sure that you forward the escalations on.
There we go.
And I just want to put in a pitch, please, wherever possible, call this number first or call this number as well. This is the number that you can get where you can actually get a case number assigned to you. So I just, I learned the hard way in another jurisdiction, in another county, a couple of weeks ago, that I don't, when it comes through me, I don't keep, I don't, I don't have access to a certain database where we can track everything. So this, this number is the one where people can actually get their case number assigned to them.
All right. And I'd just also like to encourage anyone that's listening or that's going to email. If it's in your respective district, CC the supervisor. That way we know. You know, just CC it so that that way we, we know as well. Because I know they do for you, so.
Oh, yes.
All right. So with that, I don't think there's any more comments or questions. I don't know if you had any finishing comments?
No, just to thank you again for having us. Appreciate it.
I had a couple of things.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Well, I want to apologize for having to step out. Part of what I do for PG&E is when there's a new fire start in my area, either Mendocino or Lake, I evaluate the location of the report of the start in relation to our assets, you know, be they distribution lines or transmission lines or gas. You don't have any natural gas here. And formulate and suggest a response from PG&E, be it one of our safety infrastructure protection team engines or a troubleman or whatever. The Hendricks fire in the Scots Valley area, across of Deuce Road, was in a mode hayfield, forward progress been stopped at about three quarters of an acre. So no threat there, but I had to take that. I apologize for having to step out.
We, we seen it and we knew, we knew what you were stepping out for, so thank you for that. And Melinda, thank you again. And so if there's nothing else, I guess we'll close this item. And we look forward to further progress on this and appreciate having the hard conversation. All right.
Thank you very much. Great.
Thank you.
And so as for the Board of Supervisors meeting, it looks like we've covered everything. And so we will come to the point as we need to adjourn. And we will definitely see you next week. Thank you again for tuning in with us, and this meeting's adjourned.